To call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll please. Belzak, Clistic?
Here.
Clistic, Kenny?
Here.
Marches?
Here.
McIver?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Six present, one absent. We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements. Please, anyone in the audience, if they have anything to address to the committee? Please come forward.
One at a time?
One at a time, please.
Good evening.
Do you speak into the microphone, please?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mr. Manifusco. I reside in 1921 McAdam Road. And I am right on the corner. We have been having so much trouble with the house across the street. Last week, I came back from Florida. There were twelve cars parked, two in the street, two in the garage, and eight on the driveway. Eight. I didn't know. Anyway, the next day, I see people going in and out, in and out, all day long. And it was the first day. All along, I thought she planted a flower or something, completely yellow, dandelions. This much. The next day, they all left. But those people, they're not from Chicago, the one they were in there. They were, I looked at all the license plates, seven different states, seven of them, and three from Illinois. Excuse me. The next day, some left, some stayed. When they all left, that's when I called the police. It was on Friday, Friday night. Two busload of kids, two busload, at least twenty, twenty-five. So I called the police, and they can do nothing. They told me, he says tomorrow, Monday, you go to the city hall and explain it to them. Today, another four cars, different people. And this has been going on, day after day after day, different people coming in the neighborhood. I don't know who the owner is. He doesn't care about nothing. I even, the first time he bought the house, I had to go by Joe. And I thanked him, too. And he had the three holes on the side of the house, two holes in the roof, and he was gonna move in the people. So I called Joe, and Joe says, I will send inspector tomorrow, and he did, and I thank you, Joe. This is what's been going on over there. Something has gotta be done. I know yous don't have no law for that, but yous gonna have to do something. They can rent this property by hours, or even by day.
I'm sorry, you said Mr. Manifusco?
What?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Manifusco.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. I think we have become aware of the situation. We definitely have to get involved.
Something has to be done. You have to put some kind of laws that prohibits those people to rent it by day, or by week, or by, you have to put it by month at least.
I appreciate your comments. We definitely will. Brian, do you want to address that?
Yeah, just a quick overview, you know, the police officers were out there.
Yes.
And correctly, because it's not a police issue, but more, it's a zoning issue.
Yes, yes.
So we, they came in today, and Dan and I and Steve had talked about that, and we do have to investigate, because there are different, there's a number of these Airbnbs in town where there's units maybe rented, and, you know, if, and there's different situations. There's examples where maybe a family's coming in for a wedding, or to visit, and one family might rent a home, just like any other home, a single-family home.
Yeah.
But when you get multiple people that aren't related renting, more than two unrelated, that's not permitted by zoning. So we just have to get out there, talk to the owners.
I don't even think, I didn't want to throw, I don't want to tell the police to take the kids out.
No.
Where were they gonna go? They're from New York, New Jersey, from all over the place.
Yeah, we do have to.
And the officer told me, he says, Mr. Manifusco, what are we gonna do?
Yeah, yeah, we'll.
I says, fine, let them stay. When, and he told me, he says, you go there on Monday morning and explain everything to them.
Yeah, yeah. Aldman Kenny advised it. He found the property as an Airbnb, an actual rental unit, and we'll go through. It's pretty typical, where you'll get condos and apartments, which many times, their own rules or leases prohibit that type of activity, activity. In a single-family home, it's a little bit different, where, you know, just, again, generally renting to another family, you can do that, but something like this, we will be out there.
That's fine if you rent, he had a one person over there, he rented the whole year. It was nice. He had two kids, and his wife, he don't about nobody. But when you bring a twenty people, twenty-five people, I mean, that's unbelievable.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Your Honor.
For the residents that want to address us, but we will keep you informed of what happens, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Tarde, T-A-R-D-I. I live at nineteen ten McAdam. These are my neighbors and my parents. And I want to reiterate, they are using it as a party house, rather than a B&amp;B, and there's twenty, thirty people there at a time, and they get, this Saturday, there was actually two party buses there. But they come, you know, late into the evening. But I looked online, and the General Assembly has a guideline there of what's, what, it's called the Local Government Fifty ICSC Two Eighty Bed and Breakfast Act. The very first column, it says, the bed and breakfast establishment shall mean owner occupied the residence. There's nobody in that house. There's no owner there, there's no one running the show, or whatever. Then it also says, in here, it's very explicit, it says, the guest room shall mean a sleeping room intended to serve no more than two transient guests per night. And then they provide regulations, safety, operations, so forth and so on. It also says, in paragraph five here on page two, that all operators shall be certified, certification shall be achieved by successfully completing the examination offered by local health department. What my concern is, how are they getting rid of all their trash, you know? What do we do about the rodent infestation? The house has really been run down. Joe, you saw it, you know, it was for sale for a long time. I'm a pretty handy guy, and I didn't even want to buy that house.
From what we understand about the rules, the rules of Airbnbs, the kind of situation where we had multiple groups, a party house, or whatever you thought was going on, is not even allowed under Airbnb.
Yeah.
So we, as we said, we have to definitely investigate this and make sure we find out what's going on.
And one more thing I just want to add, as far as the structure itself, it says, the B&amp;B establishment shall meet state and fire marshal law, requiring fire alarms in each room, carbon monoxide detectors.
I think you're talking about a bed and breakfast.
Well.
This might be considered something different than a bed and breakfast.
Well, yeah, I mean, really, by our definitions, it's illegal use of a home, assuming everything is, as we're all saying it is. It doesn't even get as far as a bed and breakfast, which, you know, some communities that are more touristy, you know, you get out to Galena, they have very extensive B&amp;B ordinances, things like that. But here, they're just having too many unrelated people, and all this activity is just not permitted already by zoning.
Correct.
My biggest concern with this is, from the safety standpoint, there is, if you go onto this property on McAdam, there is a whole bunch of comments, you know, saying how great the host was, and all the, you know, like you would find on Yelp or anything else. And what really, really, you know, alarmed me was when I read the guy's remarks was, landed at Midway Airport at eleven oh two, their hotel reservation had, you know, fallen. They really get a hold of this property on McAdam within four minutes, and he had the electronic code to get into the house. I mean, there's so many different things, Chief, as you know, you can, you know, make something that easy to have, a lot of things could happen, I just.
Well, the house needs a lot of work, and my concern would be for safety, you know, if you got twenty, thirty people partying and smoking and drinking, and I'm sure they don't have the proper fire alarms in that house, or any, anything, so, they're just wanted to reiterate what we feel.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Did someone else want to address the council?
Hi, we're the Lauvins. You may have heard about our bridge. We live at sixty-seven twenty-nine Clarendon Hills Road. About three weeks ago, we received a notice indicating that I think the verbiage was, the ditch would be restructured, or something to that effect. And it sounds like, as a result, the bridge will be removed, and we just wanted to see what our options are there.
Well, I think I suggest, I know Dan reached out already.
He did, he did.
Yes, and I suggested to him that we could move that bridge somewhere else on your property, if you want to keep it.
But it's not an option to keep it where it is. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Why is that?
That's for the flow of water, it's a culprit for the flow of water. And we're reconfiguring the ditches all along Clarendon Hills Road.
Mayor, but in addition to, this is, you know, for the city staff, we view this as a structure in the right-of-way, you know, and we don't, other than really mailboxes, we don't permit any obstructions in the right-of-way, even if, even if this was not a ditch, and it was a right-of-way with a sidewalk, you know, you end up getting a number of possibilities in rights-of-way. People want to put other things, sheds, other decorative type of items, and I think, in addition to the drainage, again, our code doesn't permit things in our right-of-way. Dan, if you have anything?
And that's correct, and, you know, it's a liability issue from a liability, besides the liability issue, we're staying consistent with that type of setting. I mean, believe me, there's residences throughout town that have created things within ditches, whether it's gardens, whether it's stepping stones, whether it's concrete walls, we've removed them all. And again, once we come through there, your ditch, as a matter of fact, has a pretty sharp ditch line right now.
Yeah.
So with that said, by the time we're all done, basically, make, create the swale. The swale we're gonna create in there is gonna be a swale that you'll be able to mow with a tractor, per se. Okay, right now, you can't do that. So that bridge is gonna be in the way, number one, it won't fit back into the contour, number two, it'll block the flow of water from DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance, you know, there's another code there on that. And again, we have no problem working with you to locate it in a strategic location, where you may want to have it in the front of the yard, whatever the case is, we'll help you with that. And again, I don't know the structural integrity of it, you know, whether it's gonna take four guys, or it's gonna take a machine to lift, we're not concerned about that.
It's pretty solid.
I'm sure it is, and, you know, so, we're willing to work with you from that respect, and that's the full message that I basically left with you.
Yeah, and I appreciate it, it was, you know, everybody's been very reasonable, and we haven't been upset with what anyone has said, or at least the way we've been treated. When we purchased the house three years ago, that was definitely something that appealed to us. My kids play T-ball. When I've mentioned to some of the folks that this bridge is gonna possibly be removed, you know, people say, oh, that bridge has been there for thirty, forty years. People use it as a landmark. Oh, you hit the bridge, you've gone too far, or something like that. So we wanted to see what could be done. I understand that maybe it's just not gonna work, but.
Let's meet out there and see what opportunities we can create. I mean, if you want to even incorporate, you know, I'm willing to go out there, when we start ditching over there, that we could excavate an area, a small area of your front yard, to convey that storm water back into the ditch, and create that setting back to where it was, except it'll be on your property.
Sure. Well, we're open to whatever, I mean, the bridge, it's, we've spoken to the gentleman that built the house, he built the bridge, so it's been there since, I think, the seventies.
Yeah, believe me, and we understand, there's a lot of settings, and that's why we purposely send those informational letters out. You know, we work with all residences and try to, you know, help put something there that wasn't permitted, because it wasn't permitted.
Yeah, no, I understand. Okay, and it starts June fourth?
Right now, we're a little bit behind with the weather, but nonetheless, you know, we're not gonna come in there and just take it out and basically crumble it with the machine. Okay, that part I guarantee you. So when you have the opportunity, whether it's via email, or give me a telephone call back when it's convenient to meet with you, and we can take a look at different options, and now's that opportunity, because we haven't started yet, so there's a lot of things that we can try to create.
Okay. Aldman Vaughn brought the whole issue to our attention, so.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Hopefully Aldman Vaughn can get out with you guys.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
You have my number, right, Erin?
I do, yeah. Thanks again for reading it.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else address the council?
Either way, I.
I thought I should have announced this at the beginning of the meeting. We have a new mayor this evening, and a new city clerk this evening. And this is Mayor Newsom, and this is Clerk Newsom. They won mayor for a day in the, was it a raffle, or silent auction at Our Lady of Peace, and that's why they're up here this evening. So they've had a very quick learn on how to run a meeting, and take minutes, so they're doing a great job, so thank you very much for your applause. Okay, let's move on.
The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. May seventh, two thousand eighteen. Are there any questions, um, drive motion to approve? Aldman Marques? Aldman Kenny? Are there any questions about the minutes? The roll, please. Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
McIver?
Epstein?
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
We had five ayes, one absent, and one abstain. The minutes have been approved. The next item of the agenda is receiving of communication. Do any of the aldermen have any? Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of late, Mr. Gombach and I have been getting emails from residents on Evergreen Lane regarding the property across the street. For those of you who might go down Evergreen Lane, this is the property where supposedly two homes are gonna be built by Mr., not by Mr. Broderick, but they're for sale. Of late, all the sod has been removed from the, what was formerly the T-box, and now all the sod has been removed from the property itself, in such a way that it looks pretty bad. Mr. Gombach has sent numerous emails back to Mr. Broderick, indicating to him that several things have to be done. One, the property has to be seeded with straw, and a silt fence has to be put up. I believe as of last Friday, Friday last week, the silt fence was up, but I don't think any further progress has been made on it. So that's the condition of where we're at right now, and I talked to Dan, and he said, nothing else has been done since then. And supposedly, Mr. Broderick has a contract to have that done, but right now, it looks pretty awful, even with the silt fence around.
And from, just to add in, from the perspective of the Stormwater Ordinance, he satisfied the ordinance by providing the silt fence. So depending on what his schedule is, and we haven't seen it yet, for the excavation, or the earth excavation for the proposed two lots, we're gonna give him at least four weeks, but right now, he has satisfied the intent of the code.
Any other communications? Alderman Clistic?
Thanks, Mayor Newsom. Correct, I pronounced that correctly? Newsom, all right. Just really quickly, I got an FYI email from a resident located at eight thousand block of Sawyer Avenue with regards to herbicide being used in the Park District. He's also reached out to the Park District, so they're aware as well, so just FYI. I guess when they came out to put the herbicide down, they didn't put any signs, so you had pets out there, or whatever the case may be, that could drag it into the house as well. And I guess the herbicide they use uses Trimec, this is classified as a potential carcinogen, so, he has reached out to the Park District with regards to seeing if they have anything else that they could use. So just, he just wanted to make sure that the city is aware that we just put the little signs up whenever they're spraying, so.
Just so we know, the Park District, what they do with their fertilization is not part of our program. I know that we, for example, the right-of-way's on Seventy-Fifth Street, everything is posted. The chemical that you're talking about, there's a certain amount of times that you can put that on, the Trimec, but we use alternates as well, so, yeah.
And the Park District says they're gonna be looking at some alternates as well, so they're very cooperative, so.
Okay.
Typically, they give it a sunset date, by December thirty-first, they can't use that herbicide any longer, so I don't know if that's the case here.
And there's also, you know, I'm not sure what happened at Chestnut Park off of Sixty-seventh Street in Richmond.
Have you burned that out?
I don't know, but it sure looks like it, so I don't know if it was in-house that was done, or if it was outsourced, but yeah, it's definitely burnt there.
Okay, thanks.
I know that the Vioms were talking about a rain garden in that park. I don't know if that's a coincidence of what they're doing there.
But it didn't incorporate the entire park, so that's.
You're right about that.
Yeah, so I'm not sure.
Any other communications? Yes, and Mr. Kenny?
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. I think I might need to get my own cellphone number for all the communications I have heard today. I'll start out with a small one. I got a communication from one of your residents, Lester, who happens to know me, Gary Roth, one hundred block of Elm, talking about the crack ceiling program, that even though that they have signs on the corners saying that the crack ceiling's gonna happen on certain days, that he felt that a lot of the residents on that block didn't realize it was happening, and their windows are open, and, you know, even though we have direct connect and we have that, he's hoping that the city could do some other kind of notification, because, you know, he feels a lot of the residents over there are not on direct connect, or not on the internet, so, you know, one more way of helping them out with that. Received a communication from Jeff Prince on the fourteen hundred block of Seventy-seventh Street regarding the Bailey Park Office complexes down at Bailey and Plainfield Road. Looks like they've got a piece of, a resolution to, the lights for shining in from the parking lot, they're gonna put a shield on it, so Dan was very instrumental in taking that taken care of. Lisa Stella, seventy-one hundred block of Walden. You get, sometimes you look at a house, it's, whether it be for close or a short sale, and the resident is on at a property, that the grass gets up higher, they have management companies that take care of those, and they put the landscaping contracts, you know, on a two-week basis, so those contractors don't, they're not getting to the houses like you and I would on a weekly basis. So hopefully, I got her in the right possession there, and the right people there. Ron Manifusco and his family gave us a call, which we've talked about here this evening. Steve's mom, you know, Ellie called me this evening with the whole Airbnb thing, so, I think that's it, I'm done.
Any more communications?
Mayor Newsom might have one. I received a letter, I don't, is this microphone working? It doesn't sound like it. I'll just switch, oh, yeah, I'm sorry about that. I received a letter from Ross Wankis. He's not a Darien resident, he lives on Shield Drive. Isn't that in the unincorporated area? It's just south, what is the, right off of Clarendon Hills Road? Shield Drive. At any rate, the letter is from Ross Wankis, he's a senior at Hinsdale South High School. And he has, he wanted to bring to my attention that there's a new form of recycling called terra cycling. And he's recommending to the City of Darien that we get involved in terra cycling. It is a process that takes used products such designed for landfills, like toothpaste tubes, air fresheners, granola bar wrappers, and recycles them. And there's a company by the name of Terra Cycle. So I'd like to recommend that this letter be sent to the Environmental Concerns Committee, and have them bring Ross Wankis to the next meeting to address this issue. I thought it was pretty clever on the student's part, anything that we can do to do more recycling, we love to do here in Darien. Thank you, Mayor Newsom.
Any more communications? Let's move on. Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is mayor's report, and there is no report. The next item on the agenda is city clerk's report. Madam Clerk, do you have a report? Mayor Newsom, I have one report, is that the City of Darien offices will be closed on Monday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, in observance of Memorial Day. That is all I have, thank you. Next one is, is city minister's report?
I have no report, Mayor Newsom, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is department head information and questions.
Would you like to go for it, Chief?
Sure.
Chief Thomas?
Appreciate that.
Yielding to the senior member?
Granted.
Dr. Gombach?
No, I'm, oh, he called you, man. Mayor Newsom, thank you. Anything else you think to say prior to that? We had rehearsed something earlier, I believe, correct?
Um, raise?
Well, all right. Now you're bringing it up. About the Municipal Services Department, what were you gonna say?
What a great job they do, and how everyone needs to notice how awesome they do.
Thank you, I'll make sure that the team gets the rest of that message. Thank you, Mayor Newsom. Other than that, no further report, it's all we. It's the team. You want to make sure that, just the residents out there, a lot of construction going on, a lot of curb and gutter being removed and replaced, a lot of sidewalk, so please be careful out there. We're working as expeditiously as we can. There's crack ceiling going on as well, we have a water main project on Plainfield Road that's moving along, various ditching projects, Seventy-first Street's recently been completed, restoration is in route. What else do we have? We have, the next one is gonna be on Eleanor, that's a smaller ditching project. But again, general message tonight I have is, please be careful out there, a lot of construction throughout the city, so, any questions, please don't hesitate to call us. Thank you. And thank you for your comments, Mayor.
Chief Thomas?
Thanks, Mayor Newsom. I have one item on the monthly report, the sexual assaults, if you look at those, those seem high, they are, with six. Typically, what happens is that, at the end of the year, we have to do a review of all reports, and it's that, at that end of the year time, that we make all the corrections. So when a report comes in that belongs to another jurisdiction, like three of these do, one in Kinkiki, one, I think, was Bowling Brook, and I don't remember the other one, they get referred, so, because they did not occur in our jurisdiction. So that's, those will be reduced by three, but again, instead of going every month and redoing all the codes, we do that one time at the end of the year. So it looks high, but it's not near like that. Another, two cases have to be investigated. One is probably going to be unfounded, which means it never occurred. So even though it looks ugly, you know, it'll probably look ugly throughout the remainder of the year, at the end of the year, we'll do all the proper coding and make the adjustments.
Chief Thomas, when you say end of year, are you talking fiscal year or calendar year?
Calendar year. Yep. So they. So they, by UCR rules, you have to verify all the numbers by, I think it's February 22nd. It's an odd date, I'm not sure why that date. But regardless, so it'll be done in February, and the new numbers will be posted on the annual report. Then the other item is not on the monthly report, but a couple of months back, we talked about shootings at schools. Now we just had two more. One worked out better than the other, where the school resource officer intervened at Dixon and took care of the situation pretty readily. And no one, other than the shooter, was injured in that situation. Another one in Santa Fe. The SRO was shot, critically injured, early in the gunfire. And so then that individual was able to go on and do some more damage, significantly more damage. So just to reiterate a number of things I talked about already, we do have a school resource officer program. All the schools have an emergency response to active shooters. Obviously, looking at different signs that are out there on social media and different things. If you recall, I think it was two years ago now, we had a situation at Hinsdale South. And two fellow, actually three, three fellow students came to the police department and reported the situation. And we were able to deal with that well before it got to any type of situation where somebody was going to get hurt. So see something, say something, and work through those situations.
Thank you.
Chief, as a follow-up to your reporting, so if somebody has, you know, theft and murder vehicle, we'll say, Bolingbrook, Kinkkey, as you alluded to, and they don't realize that they've lost their belongings until they get back home, they go to Darien, so they can come to Darien and make that report?
Typically, you would refer that person to another jurisdiction. Sometimes you don't know that when you're taking the report. You know, they know that they were in a situation with a sexual assault. They know that they were sexually assaulted. Don't know necessarily where it occurred at, those type of things. So then when you do that investigation, you find out where it is. Sometimes the new sexual assault law, a lot of people would refer, just go back to Chicago and take care of your report, and then it never gets reported. So they wanted to shore up some of those things. So when they come to us, we're going to take that report, refer it to the proper jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And, you know, back to that, you know, the cars, you know, we, a lot of times you'll see that number on auto theft change as well. People will park their car, forget where they parked it, swear it got stolen, then we'll find the car for them. And so those are unfounded reports as well, because it was never stolen, just play somebody else.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 171826 in the amount of $670,638.32 from the listed funds.
Do I have a motion to approve? Clustick?
I say Kenny.
Is there any questions for the treasurer?
I say Kenny. Clustick?
Roll, please. Kenny?
Aye.
Clustick?
Aye.
Marches?
Aye.
Oh, MacIver, sorry. Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and one absent. The warrant has been approved. Next warrant?
Okay, next, I'd like to request council's approval of warrant number 181902, the amount of $493,874.43 from the listed funds and payroll for the period ended May 10th, 2018, the amount of $241,953.26 for a total to be approved of $735,827.69.
Do I have a motion to approve? Shower? Alden Shower? Alden MacIver? Any questions? Roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Clustick?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marches?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, and one absent. The warrant has been approved. The next item on the agenda is standing committee reports. McLiver?
Thank you. I can't say madam mayor, right?
Mayor Newsom.
Mayor Newsom, thank you, Mayor Newsom. The Darien Police Committee met this evening, and during the meeting, we approved the meeting minutes from the January 15th, 2018, Police Committee meeting. And I will submit those to Clerk Newsom for the record. The next meeting of the Darien Police Committee is scheduled for Monday, June 18th, at 6:00 PM in the Police Department Training Room pending agenda items.
Thank you. Do you have a report, Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. The Municipal Services Committee is meeting on Tuesday, May 29th, 2018, at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Alden Shower?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next AM and Finance meeting will be held on Monday, June 4th, at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Let's move on to old business. There is still old, old business. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda. The annual Fourth of July Parade on Monday, July 4th, 2018, being at author, being at, beginning at 9:30 AM, sponsored by the Darien Lions Club, and authorized the Police Department to assist in traffic control and authorizing the temporary class closure of streets on the Fourth of July Parade. From the drool parking lot north on Cass Avenue to 71st Street, east on 71st Street to Clariton Hills Road, south on Clariton Hills Road to Hinsdale South High School. A motion to approve? Consideration of a motion to grant a waiver of the raffle license bond requirement of woman business. Consideration of motion approving the proposal of Sunrise Communication in the amount of, in the amount not to exceed $40,709 for the labor and materials for the replacement of the broadcast system in the media room and the council, and the council room cameras. Do I have a motion to approve? Alden McLei, I mean, MacIve. MacIver.
Turn your name tag again. Oh, I'm sorry.
Marquez? MacIver? Clustick?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn? Six ayes, zero nays, one absent. The items have been approved. The next item is new business. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve an audience amendic, section 3-3-24 of the Darien City Code for liquor and outdoor sales in consumption areas. Do I have a motion to approve? Shower? Alden Shower? Alden Kenny? Questions?
This is just for the summer? Or is this for the whole code for any one, one event? Okay.
Any more questions?
Two days.
Any more questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, for Chucks, you referred to Chucks, I'm sorry, is that?
Oh, but the ordinance allows.
Correct.
He was talking about the ordinance allowing two times per year. Right, Dan, is what you mentioned, yes.
So anyone can do with this type of license two times a year?
Correct.
Okay.
Only on Fridays and Saturdays.
Any more questions? Roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clustick?
Aye.
Marches?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Vaughn? Six ayes, zero nays, one absent. Motion has been approved. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of new ceiling tiles for Home Depot for the Police Department in an area, in an amount not to exceed $8,994.18. Motion to approve? Roll, please. MacIver?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Clustick? Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marquez?
Aye.
Shower? Six ayes, zero nays, one absent. Motion has been approved. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to approve the contract with the lowest-cost streetlight electric provider for a bid conducted by NIMEC on May 31st, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve? Any questions? Roll, please. Marquez? MacIver?
Aye.
Clustick?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one absent. Motion is approved. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the viewing audience know, I, there's a proposed development on Woodward and Bowton, actually on Woodward, just north of Bowton, next to the Goodwill by Woodridge. They proposed a 50-foot, 91-room hotel going to that location. And I attended the public hearing on April 30th, and I attended the city, or village trustee meeting this past Thursday. And due to concerns about the petitioner's current track record with his existing hotels, the trustees voted to postpone the vote. So that doesn't mean that it's not going to come back and get approved, but it is being postponed. I would just recommend that any residents that are interested in attending that meeting, look to the Woodridge website to see when that meeting will take place. I don't think we know of a date yet.
Well, they had said at their next scheduled meeting, which typically is two weeks out, but I don't know the exact date.
Yeah, although their mayor cautioned them that because they had a public hearing on April 30th with a, an approval by the commission, that they had 30 days to bring it to a vote. So I'm not exactly sure what that means, if they're going to have a special meeting or if they'll grant an extension to the petitioner. But anyway, there was a lot of discussion. Lots of residents obviously showed up. Quite a few Woodridge residents, of course. Those in the condominiums are especially concerned about it, given the fact that the building actually faces their building only like 170 feet away. And I stood at that location, and I could literally take a picture of someone's bedroom window if I wanted to from that location. So lots of concerns. It's kind of the, just a bad location for, I think, that kind of a development, doesn't make any sense. But the owner of the property also came to the meeting, and he obviously is trying to, you know, he made the case that, you know, because he bought on the bubble, he can't now get anyone to rent that space. And retail's kind of going away because of everything with Amazon. And so it was his idea to propose that change from retail designation to hotel. And then to, when this avid hotel idea came forward, that is a rezoning from a restriction of 35-foot height building to a 50-foot height, basically. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure that residents were aware that that didn't get rubber stamped last week like we thought it might. And, you know, if you're interested in keeping, you know, kind of a pulse on that.
You did a great presentation before the village trustees. I've watched the whole meeting.
Thanks.
No, you did, you did a great job. And kudos to trustee Abbott for speaking up. I mean, he read a laundry list
Right.
of things right off of TripAdvisor.
Well, yeah, and the concern there, yeah.
The owners' hotels.
Well, they took it to the public hearing without ever checking any of the references, because that was actually something I asked during the public hearing. Did you, you know, you have this list of references, did you actually check on any of them? And the answer was no. So, you know, they were moving forward with this developer. He's actually a doctor, which, I'm guessing his core business is being a doctor. But these are investments. And obviously, you know, not trying to discourage people from investing in, you know, opportunities. But this, I mean, it was consistent, like one, one and a half star ratings across the board for these properties. And, you know, it was, it was a very interesting meeting, to be sure, so. And you can watch it. It is videotaped, and you can actually go to the Village of Woodridge's website and watch the meeting. I think it's about, I forget at what point.
About an hour into the meeting?
Yeah, maybe not even an hour, because they just did some appointments, and then they went right. That was like really the only.
Yeah, it was early, one particular comment I remember was in an hour in. But if you, you could just fast forward to that, to that part.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the council? No more questions? I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn. MacIver? Alden Vaughn? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, great job.
Good job, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.